We'll call this meeting to order, and one of the first items on our agenda is to buy a new clock. Our clock is either ahead or behind every single meeting, so we will get a new clock that knows the correct time. Thank you all for joining us. The first call of order is to ask if you have a cellphone, and everybody does. Please turn it on silent so that we can give you our individual attention and you can give us yours. So, thank you very much for being here. Also, on the first item, there's a very special person in Fort Mill, a very young person named Aiden, and his mom told me that Aiden watches us every single week. So, I would like for council to say hi to Aiden tonight. So, hello, Aiden.
Hello.
Hi, Aiden. So, thank you very much for that. We will all, the council will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. You may join us, and then we will have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Thompson?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We pray that you be with us tonight, give us the wisdom to conduct the town's business. We give you praise, honor, and glory for it all, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would also like to compliment the fire department for an excellent open house on Saturday. It was a truly enjoyable event. The weather participated excellently. Y'all come in and find a seat, please. Thank you. So, somebody's government class must have made an assignment, right? Let us know how we can help you, okay? That's great. So, Chipper, thank you so much for all the hard work that everyone put in to make that such a delightful event for our community. I believe it's Fire Safety Week, or was, and that was a very nice opportunity to share with families the need for prevention on our watch so that you don't have to go into burning homes, or our folks don't. So, thank you very much for that. Council members?
May I also thank the police department for the function that they did.
That's right.
It was real good. I went to it.
The police night out?
Yeah.
First night out? Thank you so much, Detective Zachary, for everything that you guys do. We do a lot to try and bring information to the community that's helpful. We're still there when you need us, but we certainly want to give you everything you need so that we don't put ourselves in an unsafe situation under any circumstances. Council members, you have been provided the minutes from our September 23 meeting. Do you have any additions, deletions, or adjustments?
Hearing none, I move to approve.
I have a move to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, by show of hands, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Davey, do we have anybody signed in?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mark Kettlewell from the City of Rock Hill. If you'd like to address council, please, sir. Hi, I bet you're tired.
I am, yes, ma'am.
I bet you are.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today. My name is Mark Kettlewell. I'm the Director of Water and Sewer Utilities for the City of Rock Hill. Last Wednesday, as you know, we had a major water line break at our water filter plant, and it disrupted water service to a good portion of eastern York County, which included Fort Mill Township and all your customers. So, I wanted really to come before you this morning, this evening, and take time to thank you and your staff and your customers for their understanding and patience as we worked through this difficult time in trying to get this line repaired. You know, the partnerships that we have with the wholesale customers such as Fort Mill is, and the support that we got from Charlotte Mecklenburg Utilities, or Charlotte Water now, with Chester Metropolitan District, you know, that went a long way towards helping us try to address the problem as quickly as possible. So, thank you there for that. You know, I appreciate the, all the assistance in communicating to the customers. You know, I think that there was a lot of timely responses and a lot of questions, or answers to a lot of specific questions. I think that the, you know, the customers greatly appreciated that, and, you know, y'all's staff worked hard to help us convey that information to them. Thank you there, Davey, as well. I know it was a very, and it was an extreme inconvenience to y'all, to their staff, to the customers up here. We greatly apologize for that, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. And so, I guess, again, thank you very much for your understanding, your patience, your help, and for the partnership that we share in water service to the customers.
Mr. Kettlewell, I would like to express the thanks from the town. I got multiple predictive caller calls. I got emails. The town was kept 24 hours a day in communication with the efforts that you were making for restoration. Any of us that are homeowners know that not everything's going to work the thing, the way you think it will all the time. So, in response to such a major issue, the communications effort was flawless on your part, and we'd like to thank you for the efforts to get it restored as quickly as possible. And I think we really don't know the importance of the things that we enjoy every day until we don't have them. So, I'd like to thank you for the work and the communications effort that the City of Rock Hill put forth.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
In addition, I think it's important, as Mr. Kettlewell has addressed us, that we give thanks to the town, the employees that worked around the clock to ensure that we were in communication, and we did everything that was necessary on our side to ensure that the service was restored as quickly as possible. So, thank you all from a town's perspective. It's not something that's happened in my 63 years of existence, and it's not something I want to see again. So, thank you so much. I appreciate everything everyone did to get us back in service. There are no further folks signed in on our public hearing sheet, so we will move straight to presentations. Presentation number one is a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week 2018. Do we have anyone here to receive the proclamation? I do not see anyone, so bear with me. Lisa and I had a laugh about this earlier. If I say red ribbon, it's all that Waskely Wabbit stuff that I used to watch as a kid, so I'll try my best. The Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina proclaims, whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is a hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in the education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camanera, a Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23 through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gwen Savage, on behalf of the Town of Fort Mill and its council, do hereby proclaim the week of October the 23rd through the 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week in the Town of Fort Mill, and I urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. This is very important. It's a lot of words when we read out proclamations such as this, but it absolutely represents hours and hours and hours of service that folks commit to keeping our communities healthy and safe and drug-free. So, thank you each for listening to that proclamation and for supporting those efforts. Presentation number two, 2018-19 Development Impact Fee Annual Report. Yay. Chris Pettit is our expert on this item. Would you like to do the presentation?
Yes, your, your, uh, your mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. As the end of the fiscal year was just recently passed, it's time again to give an annual impact fee report. This report is required by state law and the town's Code of Ordinances to annually give an update of what we've collected and appropriated and expended from our various impact fees that we have in the Town of Fort Mill. So, impact fees, just a brief history, and I've got a few slides on the history. We started collecting impact fees back in 2015, and over the course of the time, we've made a few amendments and continuously worked through the various studies and plans that relate to impact fees, and we've actually, most recently, in May, council gave staff direction to commence a required five-year update to all of the town's impact fee studies and ordinances. So, we continuously worked behind the scenes with those impact fees and the documents that created those impact fees. But this report, again, is an annual recap of fiscal year 2018-19, which covers October 1st, 2018, through September 30th, 2019, and gives an update of our collections. So, just jumping right in, for the fiscal year, and one asterisk, these numbers are unaudited, and they're rounded to make it look a little nicer, but total impact fee collections for that time period was just over $1.1 million. For Parks and Recreation, that was approximately $738,000. Fire Protection Impact Fee, $143,000, and Municipal Facilities, just north of $258,000. Again, these are impact fees that are collected on new development to help pay for the impact that they have to the town's programs, and they are split up into those various categories, and the town is required to keep them separated and only spend them within those various categories. So, it's important to note that. Just providing a few different ways to look at that, this is just a visual representation of kind of the breakdowns of those impact fee collections. The majority of the impact fee collections come in Parks and Recreation. Those fees are paid for new residential development. Fire Protection and Municipal Facilities are paid for both residential and commercial development. So, that's kind of the breakdown of who pays those fees. This graph shows a breakdown of comparing residential collections, those fees that we collected on new residential development compared to new commercial development. The breakdown has shifted a good bit since last fiscal year, where I think last fiscal year it was 96% residential and 4% commercial. You can see the commercial kind of has doubled, and that goes to show the increase in commercial development that we saw over the last fiscal year, 1819. And going into the expenditures for that fiscal year, 1819, again, showing the revenues of almost $740,000. Expenditures in this fiscal year were just shy of $80,000, and that was related to the final planning and design of the town's amphitheater that's proposed in Walter Y. Elijah Park. Plan for this fiscal year, current fiscal year that we're in that runs through September of next year, will be the actual construction of that amphitheater, which will utilize these impact fee monies.
Chris, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ensure those that are watching or are here tonight that the amphitheater is one piece of many improvements to the Walter Elijah Park. We will be adding restrooms, which have long been needed at the park, restrooms up at the Calhoun Park above that, eventually lighting, some improvements to seating along the park, there'll be some park benches. There will be a number of other improvements, which I believe have been carried through the press and through comments previous, but sometimes it's easy for those of us that do this every day to forget it. So, the amphitheater is only one portion of the vast improvements that are coming to the park that was donated to the town. So, we're very excited to make good use of these impact fees in that way through the Parks and Recreation tab.
Mayor, you're absolutely correct, and the reason the impact fee funds are only showing the amphitheater is we have lots of different buckets of money. This particular bucket of money is going towards paying for that amphitheater, but there are a number of other pieces to the overall project and enhancements in Walter Y. Elijah Park.
Thank you.
Just not utilizing these impact fee monies. For the category of Fire Protection Impact Fee, again, revenues of $143,000, and our expenditures are going directly to pay for the Fire Station Number Two, which is currently under construction, and expenditures for this current fiscal year that we're in, 1920, will continue to go towards paying for Fire Station Number Two, which is on Fort Mill Parkway, and is due to be completed this fiscal year.
Excellent.
For Municipal Facilities and Equipment, again, revenues of $258,000, and the expenditures for this previous fiscal year, 1819, have gone to reimburse the town for the cost associated with the purchase of the new Town Hall building at 200 Tom Hall Street. The council has continued to budget the revenues from this fund to pay ourselves back for purchasing the Town Hall facility so that the majority of the cost of Town Hall's purchase in 2017 will come from this municipal facility's impact fee.
And again, a comment to that, in the long-range planning, prior to the town purchasing the new Town Hall building up on Tom Hall, we say that three or four times fast, you know, there was a budget item out there in our capital projects that was well into the millions, and we were just very fortunate to acquire the building up on Tom Hall for a fraction of that, which allowed the police department to expand in this building, allowed us to add customer service through drive-through lanes and service, and to give new office space and parking by revitalizing a building that would have sat empty for a period of time. So, that was an excellent move, and the impact fees have given us the ability to continue to put that money back so that we can move forward on other capital projects as we see fit.
And mayor, with that, I've gone over our collections, expenditures, and proposed expenditures for this coming budget year. Happy to answer any questions you may have related to impact fees.
Council, any questions that you may have? Hearing none, I once again remind everyone that the impact fees are collected and are driven with a set of criteria. By date, they will expire. We would have to return them if we do not make use of them. There are strict requirements on how we can use them, so I think in the work since the time that we've passed that, I believe 2015 is what you put in your report, it has certainly been a benefit to the community and will continue to do so. It doesn't enable growth to pay for growth, but it certainly takes a swat at it that we didn't have prior to. I've been a big convert on this issue. I voted against them to begin with in fear of reducing the commercial building that we so desperately needed for jobs and other reasons, but we were able to reconstruct how we were going to implement them, and they have been a blessing to the community as a whole. So, I'm grateful that council gets the opportunity to share their feelings on it, and we move forward with a majority vote. So, thank you all. Chris, that was a great report. Thanks so much.
This is a different impact fee than what the school district has in place.
That is correct.
They are two different entities. So, I know there's been some confusion when you just say impact fees.
Well, there are impact fees now being proposed in many municipalities and on the county level, so these are distinct in that they, as Lisa brings up, to the town itself. We will move into old business items. Old Business Item Number One, a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of a not exceeding $3 million general obligation bond, Series 2019, of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof, and other matters relating thereto. Davey Broom is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept old business item number one.
I have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Himsaw. Does council, this is a second reading, does council have any questions, or Davey have any comments? Anything changed since the last time?
No, ma'am. Just, this general obligation bond, the $3 million bond, will be paired, just to let everyone know, it'll be paired with town capital funds cash to go toward the Banks Athletic Park facility that will be under construction soon, and also the updating the Fort Mill Community Center.
Great. The Banks Athletic Park is to replace ball fields that we have leased for a number of years and had the pleasure of using at the recreational complex on Highway 160 East. Those will no longer be available for use for our programs, so we are building a new park that will expand those opportunities and keep those programs moving. The exciting news on the Fort Mill Community Center is we're going to take a building that is donated to the town, and it used to be my high school gym. Long, it's really old. Let me just tell you, it's really old.
No, it was mine, too.
So, it's really old.
Right, true.
But we will make, we will make very good use of that facility and provide some expanded opportunities for community use.
And the parking lot was just...
The parking lot was finally paved. I'm so excited. Yeah, so, for those of you that maybe knew, this is adjacent to the Fort Mill Country Club, and it's a beautiful old building that has a lot of use left in it, and we've got some good plans for it. So, looking forward to that. We do have a motion and a second. Any further comments or...
I just say something real quick, as the people who do follow us often, that the last meeting that we had, we had gone through the budget. We do have a healthy budget. This isn't money that we're borrowing because we have to borrow it. We're borrowing it so that we don't go cash poor, so that if something does arise, then we still have funds to operate off of.
Absolutely. Okay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, by show of hands, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New Business Items, New Business Item Number One, First Reading and Public Hearing. An ordinance annexing York County Tax MAC number 6590000273, located at 1640 O. Henry Lane and containing approximately .772 plus or minus acres. This is in Ward Two. Mr. Helms is Ward. Chris Pettit is our expert. We will now open the public hearing. Do we have any comments on this particular item? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on this for first reading?
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
So, you're in the hole for making motions tonight? So, I got a motion and a second. Mr. Pettit, do you have any information you would like to share with us?
Mayor, this is a request from property owner Eternal, Inc., at 1640 O. Henry Lane, and I apologize for the screen. I've tried to put the highlighted parcel in the good part of the screen that's working this evening, but this property is located off of Sutton Road a little ways, and currently in York County's jurisdiction, Zoned RC2, and the request is for annexation into the town limits with a zoning classification of R15 residential. The applicant came to us in 2018 and annexed the adjacent parcel, which is, I believe, eight acres, eight-plus acres, with the intended use to develop a religious institution on the property, and the acquisition and subsequent request for annexation of this piece is to help in that endeavor to give room to build the church that is planned there. The request came forward through staff. Given that a TIA was, a traffic impact study was completed for the church previously, one was not required for this, as it wasn't expanding what they were actually doing, just making it an easier to develop site, a TIA update was not required. Staff did recommend in favor of approval of this annexation request, and the planning commission at their September meeting also recommended in favor of approval.
So, in simple terms, it's a little less than an acre that they're asking to combine with property we previously voted for so that they might build a religious facility?
You said that better than I did.
Thanks.
And that's going to retain the R15 zoning?
Correct. The larger parcel was annexed with an R15 zoning designation, so that's why the reasoning staff was recommending the similar zoning for this parcel.
Have they begun any work on it at all?
No, ma'am. Just curious.
I would like to see in the future. When you have things like this and you show a little map, I have no idea where it is.
It's off of First Street.
What we need is, it's like me saying where Davey is sitting, and then you just have a little square of it.
Yes, sir. We can provide a better map in the future.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pettit? We have a motion on the table to approve and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please, by show of hands, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New Business Item Number Two, First Reading and Ordinance to Convey by Quitting Claim Deed. The interest of the Town of Fort Mill has an apportion of the property located on North Dobie's Bridge Road in the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina. This is first reading. This is Mr. Pettit as our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number two.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have two seconds. Okay. Christopher?
Mayor, this item relates back to 2017. The town acquired three parcels of land adjacent to Dobie's Bridge Park along Dobie's Bridge Road frontage. The parcel that's highlighted here on the screen, again, acquired in 2017, included a very small portion of the land that was actually, it actually contained some parking lot improvements that were developed by Glen Rock Baptist Church, which is the church just north of this parcel. Through some legal due diligence, it was determined that there were some reasons that the church had actually started to work through to purchase this small sliver. They're through a paperwork issue, so to speak. It was not finalized, but the town has worked, the town and town's attorney has worked with the church's attorney to come up with a solution that benefits both entities, and that would be this ordinance, which would convey over the town's interest in a small sliver that only includes what's been improved by the church, but it would protect the town's interest in that sliver to still give us access for parking and the future uses of these parcels that remain unknown at this time. So, staff recommends in favor of approval of this ordinance, again, which would convey over to the church the land that they have improved, but again, it would retain the town's ability to utilize it for our future interests at this park.
Yeah, it's cleanup of issues related to the tract of land. So, do we have any questions from council? I know we've been briefed on this previously when we went to purchase the property. For those of you that may not remember this, we were brought to the attention, one of our council members had a good idea for us to purchase that for future expansion of the park, and we have done so, and this is just cleanup so that we can begin our work to make that a better, better lay of the land for Dobie's Park. So, I think it's a good thing for everyone, all intended.
Is this the last piece that we have to be able to start that kind of work legally? And, I mean...
Well, we've got all the pieces of property. This is just a conveyance out of this tract to church.
Right.
Subject to an easement, which we retained.
Okay.
But I will say this, Glen Rock actually bought the property, the strip, we're talking about 1995, and paid cash.
Yeah.
So, they thought they owned it all along. The problem was the deed was never actually executed and recorded.
Gotcha. Perfect. Any further questions? Hearing none. There's a motion on the table to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New Business Item Number Three, Approval to Submit Extension Requests for Tourism Funds to South Carolina Accommodations Tax Board in the Amount of $56,903.91. Our expert is Davey Broom. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Mr. Motion has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Davey?
Yes, mayor. Several weeks ago, we came to you asking for approval of accommodations tax grant funding for entities that approached us to take part in that grant over the... for entities that approached us to take part in that grant over this past year. There was a question at the time, what happens to any funding that's left over and not divvied out to, to these, to these groups? For us, for this year, according to the state accommodations tax group out of Columbia, you are allowed to carry over two years of accommodations tax funding that's received to use for this grant purposes. After two years, if you've not utilized that funds, then you must turn that money over to the state. Just recently, we found out through their organization or their group that we can, we can hold on to that funding through an extension and utilize those funds toward any projects that we have that's related to tourism. So we still have to go through the same process with the state as our local entities went through with us to prove that what we're going to spend the funds on is going to be tourist related. We have a couple of projects that are getting ready to be underway, the Walter Wyaleisha Park improvements that we were speaking of earlier tonight, the Banks Athletic Park, the Fields, we feel like we could make a good case to spend this funding on either one of those projects. So what we need, the state has asked that we get approval from town council to at least allow staff to submit the request to the state.
Now, do you have to have a specific entity that we're going to put the money towards or is it just a generic application to...
It needs to be specific and we will generate that quickly and turn it over to them. Again, we, we think we can qualify both projects, we just want to hold on to that money if we can possibly do that.
I hate to sound this way, but I'm ready to spend that money on those projects so that we can get that done and not lose it.
Absolutely.
So in hopes that council agrees. Any further questions?
What happens if they were to be turned down by the state? Would it come back to us and still have an opportunity to apply for another project, say Wayfinder Sons or something else?
Unfortunately, it would not. If they turn us down for these projects, then they would keep that, that funding and then we would, you know, we'd go into next year and we have funds available from this past year that has carried over, so this was from, funds from 2017 that was left over. And we hope, and the hope is to have more nonprofit groups or agencies here in the Fort Mill Township come out, you know, reach out to us for the grants, we would like to, you know, provide money in that grant program, it's just we have not had, we've had very little interest over the last few years, but we're going to, we'll promote that heavily this year so that we can spend as much as we can so that we don't run the risk of losing that money to the state.
I think one of the things that's really important for those that are unfamiliar with accommodations tax, it's heads and beds is the colloquial way to look at this, it's do we bring people to our communities that are going to spend the night? And as much as we'd like to be able to work with people that have made requests for funding, unless we can prove that it puts heads in beds, we don't meet the regulatory oversight of the funding collected. So with a sunset or an expiration date on it, you know, there's some pretty stringent requirements for the spending of those funds, so as much as we'd like to do it, you know, we're at odds with trying to make sure that we only give it to those folks that qualify for it. It's not out of whether we want to do it or not, it's whether they qualify or not. So in this case, I'm hopeful and do believe that we'll be able to spend the funds towards the empathy aid or the ball fields because we can see people spending the night for events at those two locations, so I'm going to be hopeful.
So am I, I'm hopeful that the state will see it our way also.
A little better than looking for nickels in the couch, right?
Correct.
Will we be asking for more than us, so it's just right at 56, almost 57,000, will we be asking for, say 70, understanding they'll cut less back or...
We'll ask for this amount, this is all that we're qualified for, but knowing that we can request this extension each year, we'll, we'll continue to ask for extensions in hopes of using that funding on future projects.
Okay, perfect. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor for the motion on the table, please by show of hands, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, thank you very much. We'll move to the information and discussion portion of our agenda, update on fire station number two, Chipper Wilkinson, he's our fire chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Give you a little update on fire station two and open house from this weekend. All right, first off, we are still remaining on track for a February 2020 completion. In our monthly meetings, we've had some of our design architects out with us and our projects on, right on par and they have other ones that are way off, they, we are very blessed with the group we have working with it. We are remaining within budget, we are at about the 59% left in our budget, we are right on with, with track with, with all of that as well and with the contingencies. We've used some, had to take some away, so we're about breaking even in that ground as well. Since last time, we've started seeing the CMU walls go up. And I have several different shots of this going up, I know everybody's been riding by looking at it because I'm getting comments from everybody about it.
It's out of the ground, we have to look.
It is, absolutely. This is a shot from the inside of the building looking towards like the apparatus bay and then from the road, Fort Mill Parkway. And then happened to catch them out as they were beginning to set some of the roof trusses, so got to watch some of that process happen. And finally, wall is done, ready for brick on the, the building and the retaining wall. Interior work has already begun, there you see on the right hand side is the inside of the apparatus bay, left hand side is looking back from the kitchen area back towards the front of the building towards Fort Mill Parkway with some of the initial HVAC things happening. And then shots earlier today, they will be done here very soon with all the interior stud walls. It is moving rather quick now with, with the sprinkler system overhead, all of that work being done, electrician is working, they're all working together. Picture on the right is the retaining wall, the front parts of it are capped out towards Fort Mill Parkway and on the left hand side is the mockup wall. It has gone through a know of two variations on the white brick where they did it by detail the first time and just didn't quite look right, something wasn't quite right, so they reworked it, redesigned it a little bit and that is the purpose of that mockup wall. Let's see what this is going to look like, how it's going to work before we do the building. So that is the purpose of the mockup walls, when you see them out and about in the community in front of buildings, to make sure the architectural details are done properly and the masons and the various builders know exactly what they're going to do. All right, some notable items that are happening or have happened, the roof is now dry, the stormwater is complete on the front part of the property, the utilities are close to being connected, I talked with our water department and they are really close to setting, setting the meter, gas and electrical, they're all in phasing in, different parts of it, the windows will be within the next one or two weeks. The interior stud wall should be finished, they told me this week, barring anything happens, and you should begin seeing visible brick from Fort Mill Parkway really soon on the front of the building. They're over against the, the retaining wall right now working. And with that, I'll take any questions on the station.
How many, how many square feet did we get out of there?
Right at 10,000, it is in that plus minus, I can't remember the exact number, that's the number that just exactly 10,000.
And I believe everyone had a view of the fire truck at the event this Saturday that will be housed in this fire station, it's beautiful.
Yes, ma'am, the, we have received our new county engine as part of our contract and that is the primary apparatus that will be responding from out there.
I'm so proud.
It's still as yet to go into service because we're piecing it together with equipment and things like that, so.
Excellent.
A little part of this facility will have a satellite location for our police department as well.
Yes, ma'am, and we'll have an office and restroom and a facility for them.
And this parcel of land was donated, so we're making use of donation to the town and advancing that safety objective.
Pace Development was the group that donated that for us.
Excellent.
Who was that, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Pace.
From the neighborhood directly behind, that's right, that's right, okay. You have questions?
So we're still on target.
We are still on target, that is the word I'm getting every single month, we are right on target and that's what it is looking like.
That's music to our ears, on target and on budget.
It's not going to win.
And now the house into commercial buildings.
We, we've had some very fortunate, good weather on that aspect, we would like some rain, but it's helped our project greatly.
Right.
Even though, even though rain days are built in, it's helped greatly.
Excellent. Any further questions for Chief Wilkinson? Thank you so much, we appreciate all that you do.
I've got a little bit on open house, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Last week was fire prevention week, we went into every third grade and kindergarten class with exception to Pleasant and Old because of some school closings last week, so there's been some rescheduling on that and some pre-K classrooms and daycares and things to go into, still to come. So that is our target grades where we get the most bang for the buck with the educational value is kindergarten and third. But we did have our open house on Saturday, it was a great day, glad the rain held off for a day. We had a fantastic turnout, we counted 1,153 attendees, a little down from last year, but there was a pretty significant ballgame on around noon on Saturday.
Yes, there was.
Just saying, that may have affected it just a little, but lines weren't too long, all the kids, parents seemed to have a great time, a really good day, multiple first responders, our, our police department was out, EMS, we did get to have flight come out this year, they were able to attend, a really great day for everybody to interact with those that helped them, not just the fire department, but everyone. Fun things for kids and, and kids of all ages, really. Our sponsors, you guys have to be first on the list and town administration for allowing us the funding to have the event, so without that, it doesn't really get off the ground. And also for providing our staff that we have, without staff, it would be very hard to put on an event like that as well. The Elks Lodge, they were a significant donation of $2,500, Topper's Pizza donated over half the pizza, the JROTC, we could really not do this event without them, all three high schools were there and just helping manage the event, serving pizza, helping registration, taking care of the trash, just whatever we really needed them to do, they're there to pitch in and go. And we have to kind of give a shout out to Ecto One, the Ghostbusters Group has been really good to us and all the donations they bring in, they send to the Burn Children's Fund, so they don't keep any of those donations, they donate them back out. A few pictures and then I'll wrap up. Really great day, love setting the flag up, it's fun, Sparky's always loves to come out and have a good time. Helicopter's always a big hit, always a long line, everybody loves Officer Gilbert. One of the great ways our Elks, you can't see it in this one, but they're at the start of the line, working with our JROTC together. And just various events, Spray House, kids getting to go through a tunnel, putting on a, a set of turnout gear, crawl through some theatrical smoke, see some of our apparatus, get to spray in, into the spray house, see an extrication demo, understand what it takes for us to do those kinds of things. And then we concluded with a side by side burn of a sprinkled and a non-sprinkled space. You can see the damage on the right, you're flowing for us about 150 gallons a minute out of a hose to extinguish the type of fire on the right. The one on the left, if everybody turns around, you get a better picture in the back in the crowd, you see the difference in the damage and the sprinkled is 15 gallons a minute and it does the job, it really, really does the job. The one on the left is what damage was done to the walls, yes, the couch was damaged, the contents were damaged, but that is all that was damaged in the structure from that 15 gallons. Many thanks go to our deputy fire marshal, we, he was the one behind it, put it together, made sure it ran flawlessly, was in the schools all week with some of our staff, really, really, really working hard. And then our fire department staff, if they weren't willing and to come out and do this and help the community, it really wouldn't take off. So again, thank you for your support and what we do with this event. I'll take any questions.
Again, it was an, I went, it was an incredible day, a lot of gleeful children holding fire hoses and crawling through theatrical smoke and a lot of adults that I think were learning, I didn't know the difference in the damage from the sprinklers to the force of what we would spray on one, that's pretty, pretty incredible. Any questions?
Thank you for what you does do.
Thank you.
It is a dangerous job, I did a smoke out one time and that's a scary thing, I hope I never have to experience again, so thank you.
You're welcome, and if anybody wants to go through fire station two, just give me a call and we'll, we'll plan to meet up and go out there and take you through, now that it's at a place where you can really see what the inside's going to look like.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any executive session items, so...
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I have just a brief moment to introduce a new employee?
Yes, sir, please, I meant to do that earlier, I apologize. Please introduce our new employee.
Thank you, I'd like to ask Ken Jackson to step up, please, and I'm going to stay seated because so that everyone can hear my voice on the microphone. Just want to introduce each of you to our new building official, Ken Jackson, he's been with us since August 2018, employed as our plans examiner, reviewer, he has brought a wealth of knowledge to our organization, he spent 18 years with the city of Rock Hill as both an inspector and a commercial plans examiner. He holds upwards of 17 licenses throughout the state, has done a tremendous job with us, has filled in for the last seven months as our interim building official and has just, we haven't skipped a beat, so we're, we're very proud to have him join us. I do need to share a little bit of, I guess, personal information about him, just so you really want to get to know your employees and I felt like after I read this, I thought I knew him, but Ken here is a semi-professional singer, he sings in a quartet called The Kinsmen and has been for 30 years.
Oh, I know of them, that's awesome.
Can we get a sample?
Only, only if you join in.
We don't need that.
That's wonderful.
So, but yeah, Ken's been, he also brought his lovely wife with him here tonight, Kay, so we thank her for being here tonight. He has one stepson, two grandchildren and one great granddaughter, so he is, again, he's been a great teammate to us, we appreciate him and we're very happy that he has joined us as our building official for Fort Mill.
Outstanding.
Appreciate, appreciate the opportunity.
Well, we're really happy to have you permanently now, that's a good thing, so thank you so much.
Look forward to doing good things with, with the town.
Excellent.
You can tell he has one drawback, he never smiles.
Welcome aboard, we're so happy to have you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, council, just out of grins and giggles, those of you here from the school level, what were you told to accomplish this evening?
We need an agenda.
Yeah.
Come up here, get one from Virginia.
Yeah, because when I went back there and was talking to the little fellow, he said, "We need an agenda," I said, "How?"
So in, in addition to the agenda, what were you supposed to learn?
Uh, just, we just had to write down notes and then we have a little, so we have to write on it and I feel like I've got enough notes.
You have an agenda for yourself or you have enough notes for anybody?
I mean...
You stayed the whole time. You stayed the whole time, I think that says volumes.
Yes.
Very good, well, I hope you learned something this evening and we appreciated you joining us. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion for adjournment, Jamie, you've fallen down.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Have a good week. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.